At 7:02 PM. Clerk Hootson, can you give us a roll call, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Yes.
Commissioner Penoir. Town Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hootson here.
We will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. We can stand.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
We'll move on to the review of the agenda. And Clerk Hootson, if you can take us through.
Will do.
The items on the agenda.
Will do. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, Pledge of Allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Five, consent agenda consisting of meeting minutes, financial report, public safety report, public works report, administrative report. Six, reports. Arts Council Committee Report, Cert Committee Report, Economic Development Work Group, Events Committee Report, Green Team Committee Report, Historical Committee Report, Greenwell Consulting Report, Commissioner Reports. Seven, business. A, Property Standards Public Input. B, Resolution 2023-14 Department of Public Works Utility Cart Purchase Board Vote. C, Resolution 2023-15 Vision Plan Board Vote. D, Ordinance 2023-06 Town of Upper Marlboro Logo Introduction. E, Ordinance 2023-07 Codification Introduction. F, Ordinance 2023-08 Year End Budget Amendment Emergency Ordinance. Ordinance 2023-09 Land Purchase 5510 Old Crane Highway Emergency Ordinance. H, FIP CIP Approval. Eight, Public Comment for Items Not Necessarily on the Immediate Agenda. And nine, Administrative Updates. Ten, Preliminary Approval of Next Meeting Agenda. And eleven, Adjournment.
Thank you, Clerk Hootson. I just want to clarify that item H is actually meant to be FIP BIP Approval. I think we all just got in a budget mindset and made it C instead of B. Which is just business improvement. Are there any changes, additions, et cetera, to the agenda at this time? Hearing none, we will move forward and move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Hootson, would you call the roll for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Hanchett.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Commissioner Penoir.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports. I'm going to take us a little out of order because our town administrator needed to go get a drink of water. And we will start with the Cert Report. Chief Burke, can you?
Yes. For the month of June 13th, a combined total of 320 hours of meeting hours and training hours.
Thanks. Thank you. We will now move over to the Events Committee Report. Commissioner Lot.
So in the last meeting, we discussed changing the way we did Halloween this year. We are talking about combining efforts with the Green Team. Doing a fall festival instead of just a regular Halloween. Have like a farmer's market. So we're still, you know, that's, we're still working out the details. So more information will be forthcoming.
Thank you. All right. Green Team, Commissioner Hanchett.
Thank you. We had a meeting last week with the Event Committee. We're trying to iron out the details for the farmer's market. There is harvest that's happening and new beds going in. But more information about the farmer's market will be provided as it is decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Historical Committee. So I will note that the Historical Committee requested noted and let us know that the 75th anniversary of the military being desegregated this year. And so they requested a proclamation and I was able to provide a proclamation. There were just some mixed signals about creating an event and where that event would be held. So we put that off because there wasn't really enough time to plan something appropriate. They are meeting both on and offline. And so they have been given kind of some more protocols to help keep things clear. Then moving on to Greenwell Consulting, I'll take that as well. And we, we had a conversation and meeting with them and they're preparing to have us all as a board meet with the State Delegation to talk about our asks for the next legislative year. And they're also following some of the county legislation that's happening so that as things come up that might agree or disagree with the goals that we set forward when we did the budget, that I can weigh in on those on behalf. We are going to have to wait for Kyle to get back for the arts and the economic development.
President Franklin.
Clerk Hootson.
Leslie, Leslie is here with Greenwell and they apparently had an agenda they wanted to go over with all of you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie. Let's give her the floor then.
Let me give her the floor. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. Our team wanted to just join in today and provide a quick summary on some of the legislative initiatives we worked on. And Mayor, you also just summarized some of the things we will be working on in an interim. So thank you so much for that. But I just wanted to go over the 2023 session. As you all know, we were working with the town to obtain some funding for the parking project. And we are very happy to report that $150,000 was allocated for this project. And as of July 1st, these funds were made available to be accessed. So if the town has not already began the application process to submit to the Department of General Services, we did want to extend our assistance as you work through that application. If there's any assistance needed with facilitating conversations with the departments, we also are available for that. So please keep us up to date on where you are in the process and we'll make sure to assist. There were also a few legislative bills that I wanted to quickly go over. There were a number of bills that were introduced this session. And today I wanted to highlight five that I think the town should just keep on the radar as you continue to work on your initiatives for the upcoming years. And the first one was a House Bill 556, which was the cannabis reform bill. As you all may know, during those last few weeks of session, there were some discussions because municipalities had been stricken from the tax revenue distribution. So our team made sure to notify the town immediately. And we were able to gain some support from other municipalities and are very happy to report that municipalities were added back to that tax revenue distribution. So that language now allows for any municipality with a dispensary located in its jurisdiction will now receive 50% of proceeds that are allocated to counties. So if that is something that the town foresees in their future or as you're planning for these things, it's something to keep in mind because it is something that could bring extra revenue. There aren't many specifications on how that funding can be used. It's pretty open. So it is another source of possible revenue for any projects you have. In addition to this bill, briefly, the next set of bills are regarding some grant programs that were either expanded or formed this year. And the first one is a House Bill 706, which established the Business facade Improvement Program. This will have a $5 million allocation every year, starting next year. And it will be administered through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So if there's a business facade program that the town would like to implement, this is a possible funding source that we can look into. The next one is Senate Bill 840, which would give grants to any local nonprofits or faith-based organizations that are in need of any security enhancements to fight against hate crimes. So as you all are, are hearing any possible issues that could be related to this, this is a possible funding source as well. The next one is House Bill 751, which would give grants to your local law enforcement. These grants would help support any training for mental health first aid or critical stress incident responses. And the last one is Senate Bill 650, which would give grants to local governments to help reconstruct, rehabilitate, or replace any public facilities that have been destroyed or, or have any issues due to natural disasters. So again, these were just some grants that I wanted to make you aware of so you can keep in mind. And as, as Mayor Franklin stated, there are some initiatives that we have begun working on. So we have sent a meeting request letter to Senator Watson to schedule a meeting with him and the delegation so that the town can present some of your legislative priorities. And we are also coordinating a meeting on the federal side with Senator Van Hollen's office so that we can also discuss some funding opportunities for the town. So our team will continue to keep you all up to date as, as we coordinate those meetings. But I'll stop there. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide you all with a summary today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Do you have questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Administrator Snyder, are you able to give us an Arts Council and Economic Development update? I don't see Commissioner Colbert.
Absolutely, Mayor. The Arts Council is meeting on Monday in person down at the library, right there at the, on Main Street, to check out the status of the pop-up arts festival that's happening here in the next couple of months. So that's going to be at 6:30 in front, a meeting in front of the library and then walking along the mall, the National Mall right there. So that's what they've been working on. We're also, they're looking into taking over, looking at the gallery space, having rotating galleries appear at Town Hall. So that's exciting. So we're in preliminary discussions with that as well. Any questions on the Arts Council?
I think that's good. Thank you.
And Economic Development Work Group, the board's approving some applications tonight. And I know Commissioner Colbert's working to schedule a meeting with the members of the work team.
Great, thank you. With that, we will move into the Commissioner Report. Hold on. Chief, are you able to click on that from there? Thank you. All right. So I will start off, the report is a little lengthy because we are like covering a month and a half, pretty much, since we've had a regular meeting. I'll start with the most obvious thing, which is that the county, after letters and requests, agreed to install sidewalks on their road on Old Crane Highway. They're also paving it. The town is putting no funding into that. It is all the county. It's the county road. They have been, their crew has been amazing. They have, you know, extended projects as asked. They have talked to all the homeowners and worked really well with them. So we are really, really grateful for the county taking on that project and that helps meet some of our road needs. I know that our own residents are waiting for their roads to be taken care of. And I just want to clarify that the difference is the county has engineers, their employees who can put the branch, the plans in their head and then execute them without having to go through a permitting process. We have to pay people to come up with plans. We have to go through a permitting process and we have to acquire some supplemental funding. So that is why it takes us longer than the county to, to take care of the roads. That said, you will see that we are going to be starting to look at Spring Branch Road paving because those plans have come in from contractors. And that will be next month. We did do some temporary repairs because of how long it's going to take. So Old Mill Road got a temporary repair. Spring Branch Road had a sinkhole that had to be filled, so we did those in the last month. We are also, you'll see that there's bag signs on Church Street. We are installing stop signs right, right now on Church Street to help slow traffic down because that is not one of the first priority roads. And we do want to make sure it's safe over there. So those are the paving road projects going on. Other things that we've done this month is the board attended MML. We learned a lot. We were able to make some good connections. I was able to actually talk to the governor about our vision plan, which was exciting. We, last weekend, we opened an ice cream shop in town, which was really exciting to be a part of. And the owner of the ice cream shop is actually a longtime resident of the town. Because he grew up here and it's really, really exciting to have that community there and good ice cream. I attended a county meeting with the DCAO Rogers of Economic Development. We were able to kind of point out the needs of Upper Marlboro for economic development and talk to some of the more quasi-governmental agencies about how we can implement some of that. I did testify in front of the Planning Board requesting funding for a trail study. That was awarded to us. So we will be having a trail study over here where we're purchasing the land for that trail to go in. And that's an important goal with our economic development. I participated in a zip trip, I think, since the last meeting. I have been meeting with the school principals over the summer, kind of talk about how we can coordinate better and get the kids involved doing service learning hours and that kind of thing. I know the schools aren't in town, but our residents attend the schools. So we want to make sure we're coordinating. I, I've been attending meetings with CSA 23, which is a partner community organization that sponsors National Night Out. And we have spent with it. So I usually attend their meetings and have been attending their National Night Out meetings. We hosted a community conversation on Spring Branch Drive to talk, I'm sorry, not Spring Branch Drive, on directory links, to talk about some of their concerns over there with parking. Held some meetings about annexation with whole communities who asked us to present to their HOA and the communities that we are working on annexing for. We've been getting very close with the annexation negotiations. So in the next probably a few weeks, the board will be considering annexation agreements and finalizing the borders. I met with the state attorney while I was at MML. That was an interesting meeting to talk about all the things. Met with the folks from the landfill and the County Department of Environment. And we are going to be implementing a citizen science project once they identify some locations so that we can have someone going out and reporting smell information on a regular basis. So if you're interested in being a citizen scientist, let us know. Everyone knows I brought them some flyers this weekend. We're excited about the event that Commissioner Lot has been spearheading to do Backpack Drive and a community cookout over here. That went in there. And then we also, when we lost power, we realized we had just bought generators two weeks ago to help with emergency medical equipment, but we had no way to know who had emergency medical equipment. So everyone got a flyer so that residents can sign up and be on our priority list. So if the power goes out, we can call you and say, do you have emergency medical equipment? Do you need a generator? If you have emergency medical equipment, please let Town Hall know so we can know how to contact you. Yeah. I think, I think that's it. It's been a busy little bit. I will turn it over to Commissioner Colbert. Is he here? Can you speak, Chief, if he's on that line?
He's not as.
Move on to. Oh, thank you. Sorry.
You're welcome.
We'll turn, turn it over to Commissioner Hanchett.
So this last month, I attended MML. Thank you, John, for organizing all that. It was really informative and it was good, good, good time. And I also attended the grand opening for the new business on Main Street. And that, other than that, was a light month for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
I also attended MML. And we had our first event, which was a small one. We did balloons and ice cream, well, icy for the children on July 8th. We had a small turnout. Hope that more people can come out for August 12th event for the Backpack Drive. We want to have a cookout and, you know, fellowship with, you know, it's just an event just for the town residents. So we're not going to have any outsiders. We are accepting donations so we can stuff the book bags for the children. And the leftover book bags that we don't give out, we'll probably donate them to the church. So they'll still go to good use.
Commissioner Penoir?
Hey. I also attended MML. Made, reacquainted myself with the number of people that I used to go to MML with. And also the grand opening of the ice cream store. That was very near and dear to me. We tried to get them in there two years back and just couldn't find the right spot. And I was very happy to see them not forget about us and still come back.
Thank you. We are going to move into business, but I just want to clarify the public comment procedure for business. So if you are online while we are having our discussion and introduction and you, you want to make a comment, just go ahead and put the hand up, raise hand. If you are in the room, then you can, wait, you don't have to come stand up while we're talking. When we're done talking, you can approach the podium. Everyone goes online and in person will have three minutes per item to provide their comments. And you will, they'll just need to say which street you live on, not your address, but your street and your name. We are not, we, we need to just go through business. So if you have questions, you can ask them in your public comment, but understand that our answers are feeding up your public comments. So that's why we have the work session so that there's more space for you guys to ask us those questions ahead of time. So we're going to start the business with basically a public input session on property standards. And I'm going to actually ask Administrator Snyder to introduce that so everyone understands what we're considering and why we need your opinion.
Thanks, Mayor. The town introduced its own property standard ordinance back in the 1980s, or one of the first ones. And then it was redone back in 2016, both for commercial and residential. Since then, there's been some off and on issues that the, the current ordinance that the board is looking to try to figure out, if we're going to just revamp current property standard ordinances for the town to bring it in line or just kind of go straight with Prince George's County Code and have the code off. Prince George's County Code. So the town code was kind of a bit more friendly toward residents, but it opened up some loopholes. So going with the county would kind of be a bit less friendly, but it would definitely close those loopholes. So just trying to get some input from the residents about what they would want to see. Do they have a lot of concerns with properties around town? Do they think everything's okay? What would, if there are issues, what do they kind of see a lot of issues?
Did we lose you?
No. Could you hear me?
Yeah. Did you finish talking? You finished talking?
Oh, yeah. I finished talking. I'm sorry.
I know you're suffering from some allergies, so. All right. So that stated, do any of us want to say anything? Are we ready to just kind of listen? So we're ready to listen to your opinions on property standards. So if you have any, please either raise your hand or come up. Otherwise, we move to the next. It seems like everyone feels good about property standards.
I have no one online raise their hand.
Okay. We have Joe Herkle coming up. Or Clay. Or Clay. I apologize.
At the age of 58, her Clay. Joe Herkle, Old Mill River Pike. She's not so much about the property standards themselves, but the way that they have been enforced in the past. We did have a statement from the chief before that they were not enforcing them until there was a complaint. But also in the past, I don't remember if this was the, yes, this was part of his time. They have not been following the procedures that were specifically in the ordinance on how, you know, how people were supposed to be notified of complaints and stuff like that. And I know Linda and Kyle, I talked to before, when I kept getting cited and just like, here's a picture of your property, fix this. It was like, and they were like saying it was vegetation and it did not meet the definition of vegetation. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Give me a minute because I'm keeping the comments. We have no one else and.
I have a question.
Sure.
Kyle mentioned loopholes in our county, or the town code versus the county code. Is there a way we can, rather than throw the whole thing to the county, close those loopholes?
So that's.
Identify them and close those loopholes?
Right. So I know that you, I had identified some of them in your time. So maybe at the work session, you can bring those points forward and we can look into that. And that's, that's the decision we have to make. I just wanted to, the business meeting, I wanted to give the public a chance, an extra chance to comment. And then during the work session, we can work on that. But. Did you have a comment?
Yvonne Tucker's Spring Branch Drive across the street by a park resort. There's a park, sorry, not a park, cars parked down that hill. Not ever been noticed. Summer lot.
Across the street from here.
I.
Thank you.
Outlaw from Old Crane. I think my comment is like personal property and more just in general. As I mentioned, the garbage, embarrassing. First, the county's. Beautiful. There's like walk down that street and finding alcohol bottles, beer bottles. I can take you down to the Bank of America right now and show you two bottles of bourbon just laying there. So to me, it's embarrassing. It's representing us, the residents. So I think we need to do better about finding a way to clean it up. Maybe hosting volunteer programs. People at any complete volunteer hours can come and clean up the town for us, whatever. And I know I can probably do better as well by volunteering with the Green Team, so.
Do you hold a town cleanup day? So when we did the pond, we used to do it to hold town. I know that Cert adopted the pond. I don't know if they still do. And when you adopt a pond, it's a quarterly cleanup. We could do one every quarter and, you know, combine it with the pond cleanup along with the town cleanup. We've done that before and that's been rather successful.
So right now, we've been doing the cleanup when the county has their cleanup cleanup because they'll send their, start around to pick up garbage. So that's been twice a year. We would love to do more frequently and more spread out in town, but we have had so few volunteers come out to those events that to send people on the busier roadways by themselves is concerning. Now that we have this sidewalk on, on Old Crane and sidewalk, we have got sidewalk. Now that we have this sidewalk on, on Old Crane and sidewalk, we have got sidewalks on most of Marlboro Pike in downtown. It should be a little easier to spread out, but we always want to ensure safety. We will, um, Cert will have one in the fall where they get the rangers out. We'll advertise that, we just didn't know the date. But if people are interested in having quarterly ones, we would be happy to do it. We just need a base of volunteers who will. Come on, yes, it is.
Brian, how does Cert's street want proper answers to specific tracks? Um, I have to thank the town, I know they're not like, they're maybe trying to be doing it, but I've seen them do it and they've helped out a lot. Just wanted to give. Brian, what's up? Town needles before, just to let you know, or familiar, yada, yada. So it is hard and I know they're trying their best, but man, we got a lot of people coming down for it. Well, so we might have to make as a community, it's not, you, you can't just say, oh, it's your job. Because that's crazy, that's too much. So we will absolutely have to do more than that, whether it's the community together or whatever. Think it's going to take the whole town to make something better happen. Um, there's no way, I, I get that. It's just, hey, you're never going to catch people throwing stuff in the woods, but seriously, I pick up a whole giant bag a day. Every week I go out there to pop my grass and knock it around, a whole bag at least.
This is Sally Almer, Marlboro Pike. And just the same issue. It seems like it's the trash. And I know that there's language that anything that comes out loose out of the trash when they dump it, they're supposed to grab that. But it's every trash day that town homes stuff goes over and I'm picking up trash off that. And it's always heavier trash day. This time. My trash that. Also, I'm not in the town homes and I'm not policing their trash and it's the language. But then to pick it up could help a lot of.
Sorry, guys, I want to make sure I write this down, um, for our decision making. Thank you, guys. We are going to move on to Resolution 2023-14, Department of Public Works Utility Cart Purchase. Um, Director Bond, can I ask you to, well, actually, I'm going to ask, first I have to ask Sir Cozen to read it into the record and then I'm going to ask Director Bond to explain, um, the purchase and the funding.
All right, Resolution 2023-14 Session Regular Town Meeting Dated July 25th, 2023. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to offer, authorize the purchase of a Bobcat UTV.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, like I said, this is a, uh, Bobcat UTV. Um, it's a smaller version, uh, pretty much of our pickup trucks. It's more of a utility cart, um, off-road utility cart. Um, the plan is to use this for, you know, town beautification. We can use it for, you know, watering, getting in and out of tight spaces. Uh, we can use it for litter pickup, um, a little safer, uh, getting litter from out of this vehicle rather than having someone walking the roadside. Um, the price for this UTV is $12,900, which would be coming out of the, um, beautification grant, um, awarded to us. It is currently a low hour'd, uh, rental from United Rentals. Um, and it also comes with, uh, warranty as well. Um, I will take any questions that the board may have at this time.
Questions?
So this comes out of the beautification grant money?
Correct.
If public has comment, uh.
Herkley, Old Marlboro Pike, I was just wondering if this is electric vehicle or if this is full or dead?
This vehicle is diesel.
Don't see any hands. So, um, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14, Department of Public Works Utility Cart Purchase? So is there a second? Cozen, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin?
I?
Commissioner Hansett?
I.
Commissioner Lot?
I'm.
Commissioner Penoyer?
I.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
You.
Oh, no, unmuted. I can't hear you. Get the unmuted. Unmute.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, I'm going to ask Sir Cozen to read this into the record and then I'm going to ask, um, County Administrator Snyder to give us an overview.
Very well. Resolution 2023-15 Session Regular Town Meeting Date July 25th, 2023. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve the Town of Upper Marlboro Vision Plan developed with the help of Town Resident Input and Better City LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this resolution is before the board, uh, to adopt the vision plan. That is, and everyone's packing, it's been discussed over the past couple of months and working with Better City. Um, the vision plan's going to go forward first and then there's going to be the action plan that comes afterwards on how to carry out the vision of the town. Um, I don't think any questions anyone may have on it.
Have any questions?
Does this vision plan have a timeline?
Right, so as we discussed in the work session, they'll get the timeline with the action plan. So this is the overall vision plan and then the action plan will have the timeline. Any cost projections? That's all in the action plan. This is, this is where we want to go. The action plan will be how to get there.
How can we approve this without having, um, some of that information?
I mean, that information for me is crucial whether or not I approve it.
So the vision plan was adopted by the community. It is a guiding document that explains where the residents of this town want to go. Um, I will say that in my time as a planner, um, I've never had the input, the level of input that this community put into this plan. Um, people came to meetings, they talked to Better City, um, and I, I think this is, this is what the community told us they want to do. So what we're doing is adopting the community's vision and then we're going to have the steps and actions needed to take to get there and we will adopt that separately.
Well, you know, my stance has been always that this vision plan was already put in place even before I sat on the, on the board. And I never did see any names of residents or street addresses to identify that these are actually coming from the residents. And I've said that to you. I mean, I think, I don't think it's a bad plan, but I don't see where the input came from the residents.
So we did have, um, Better City, this has been something that was put together before you came here. We had Better City come in. Um, they held phone conferences with residents, they held in-person meetings with residents. And there were two, um, vision planning sessions, uh, I believe you were at one of them. Um, to adopt this plan and ensure that it, it was a resident community-driven plan. So.
I don't think it's a bad plan, I just, you know, that was always my stance, that I didn't really see where the input came from the residents. I saw, like, most of this was put together before Better City came aboard.
I mean, certainly, yes, because I was a planner, when I became a commissioner, I collected all of the information from, from talking to residents over 10 years, residents said things. And I did put that together into a document. And obviously, when Better City and I spoke, I shared that information with them. Over the 10 years of my being here and talking to residents, I didn't write down every name and every adject of every suggestion. I just compiled them all into one place. But Better City didn't draft this based just on what I gave them, which already was from the residents. They drafted it based on actually meeting with residents. I think they met with around 60 different residents and stakeholders, which with 652 residents is a really big portion. Participate number. We can let the community kind of come up in, in the, the public, we can have some public comment from the residents to, you know, let us know if they feel like this was a community-driven process and you're welcome to come up to the podium. Commissioners don't have anything else, okay?
Just, just one question, sorry, this is Commissioner Colbert, sorry for joining late. Um, just to clarify, this isn't, uh, you know, we're, this isn't a binding document, like, we're not allocating any resources, we're not allocating any, uh, funds at this, with this particular plan. This is just looking at how, or based on resident input, based on our input, what we would like the town to look like in whatever timeframe is decided, once we get to the action plan phase, correct?
Right, so it's, it's adopting a unified vision for the residents so that we know what they should be adopting with timeline and amount.
Right, so we'll still be able. So we'll still at the action plan phase and each potential phase of, whether it's procurement or, you know, adopting any of these potential initiatives, we'll still be voting on each of those individually, just in alignment with this plan, correct?
Correct, first of all, adopt an action plan, that's the next step. Uh, and then as each action plan item comes up, yeah, we will have to budget for it or apply for grants for it. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Herkley, Old Marlboro Pike, um, I was wondering if any of the stuff from the county's Upper Marlboro Action Plan was taken into consideration? There were some threats that were done and one of the most highly requested things was to change the monument to a traffic circle at that meeting, so try to make it less confusing. And then the county wouldn't take this, it's going to urge to make it even more.
An elected official asked them not to make it a circle. Was it me? Um, yes, all of the items from the county's vision plan were taken out and put into a Word document and given to Better City along with the vision plan.
It was also rated, there was an appendix in the back of it that actually has the county people voted for each item.
They had all that information.
So, uh, I.
Anna?
I agree.
Oh, sorry. Sir Cozen?
Yeah, I have Monica Williams online that want to make a comment.
Okay.
Hello. Yeah, I'm, um, I was able to actually meet with, um, uh, Better Cities. I had a one-on-one conversation with them, they invited me to give input. And they made sure that I was on camera. One of the things they said is that it had to be on camera because it was a virtual meeting. But I did, um, have a meeting with them to give input. As a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, if there was other Commissioner, question, Anna?
Uh, I have a tendency to agree with Commissioner Lot. The, what's going into this? I was at one of the first meetings with Better City and when they brought up horses, you could hear crickets in this room. And there were 20, 30 residents. And, uh, we got horses. It didn't make sense.
So it's, it's funny because it didn't really make sense. So we, the horses were crooked and then when we put out the logo survey, there was a logo without a horse on it. And everyone, like, a massive quantity of people who voted for that logo said, I love this, but it should have a horse on it. So between that first meeting and voting for the logo, or maybe it's a different set of people, right, that participated in the logo, but they're still residents whose opinion then comes into the process.
Which is true, but, uh, in between, that information came from somewhere, a survey or something, which we should have, uh, the background for it to make sure that the people that were commenting on the logo, because you put it everywhere, uh, we're in that country.
Right, so we actually split it out by that and.
Then I'd like to see that.
Believe I spent, did I send it to you guys?
I've seen it, I just don't remember if I read it, I think you emailed it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I emailed that to y'all. It's possible that I emailed out before you were. Yeah, it's possible it was before. The surveys from the logo, it's possible it was done before you were sworn in. So we can make sure that you get a copy of that.
We did, they, um, Better City did meet with each of us.
And they met with you as a resident also?
As a resident, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I really don't have any problems with it if, as long as along the way, we can, um, you know, strike down things that we don't think want to fit the, you know, fit the parameters. As long as we can, you know, talk about it, you know, and see if we have different alternatives, if there are things that we don't want to do later on or we don't have the money to do.
And this is rather crazy.
As long as we have the opportunity to be able to, you know.
So we'll let you know that the Economic Development Firm has funding mechanisms that will not be the town residents' funding. Um, that's what they do. They figure out how to finance things through, uh, a variety of different ways. And, um, they've been meeting with partners who can help us finance these things as they're starting to prepare the action. This is not going to be town residents have to pay for everything. We do think out of respect for the town residents who put their time and effort in, that us just deciding to strike something because we don't agree with it is kind of like, why do we ask them to participate? If we're then going to say we don't like that?
Well, this is a whole lot of stuff, so I don't know if, uh, the town residents are reading through all this stuff. So I'm, I'm talking about as we go through the process, just as Colbert said, um, we have, we need to, um, talk about, discuss, figure out that this is something we want to do. We're not making concrete decisions today. And so I agree with not making a concrete decision today, but I'm going to be with moving this forward, you know, a bit. But not making a concrete decision on it. I don't know what the, uh, what everybody wants to do.
I mean, this is what everybody wants to do. That's the thing that I'm, I'm struggling to understand is this is what the residents said they want Upper Marlboro to look like.
And five years from now, and we have a different group of people and they don't like it, can we change it?
If five years ago, five years from now, a different group of people doesn't want to see these things, then you can hold another visioning process with those residents. Um, I think most of the residents who were involved in this process are long-term residents who have been here.
That's not what I'm saying, Sarah. What I'm saying is if people change their mind or they look at it and say, this, this may be too pricey for us to take on and we're not getting any assistance, maybe we don't need this as much as we thought we did. And we changed that.
Of course, you could always change a vision plan, I just think that out of respect, I, I feel very, like, I asked people to come, I went door-to-door, I talked to them, I invited them to participate in this process. And I feel like their opinions aren't being valued right now, and that is why I'm concerned.
That's not, that's not at all the, what we're trying to portray here. What we're simply saying is, along the way, we can make changes if we need to. That's the question.
Yeah, I would.
Is it yes or no?
I mean, obviously, the answer is yes.
Okay, that was the question.
But I think.
That was the question.
Having professionals and community-driven changes is probably critical to making. All right, so is, is there any more public comment, because we've been chatting?
I didn't even know.
Yes, you can, you can public comment if you want to do.
Audrey Phillips Spring Grant, I just want to know what does the process look like? Can you outline the process? I just want to know that, so we can clarify.
So, for over the past, it's been like ten months, probably been ten months. We hired an economic development firm, and they engaged in communications with key stakeholder residents and different other stakeholders who aren't residents, like the churches and that kind of thing. And got their ideas about what the town could be like, they came to town, they looked at it, saw what some of our issues are, and started thinking about how those things could happen and succeed. After they started to come up with.
I'm like, I think, I'm sorry.
Kind of think, individual thinking, and then they said, okay, so now we've got some ideas, let's get all of the community, or as much of the community into one room and talk. And run these ideas by them, and ask them for their inputs, that we can flesh these things out. That meeting had, I want to say like thirty-six residents at it. And then they had, after they did that, they went back and they created a plan, and then they came back to the community, and I want to say, I think you were at that, a vote meeting. There were maybe twenty at that last one, and they talked through all of these concepts and ideas, and got community feedback, and then made changes based on that.
And after the vision plan, then you have the action plan.
Right.
Which is the financing.
How things are done.
What's been done, the timeline.
Yes.
So on and so forth, and each of those actionable items are approved or disapproved by the board or by the.
So they're approved by the board.
Okay.
But something like, if one of the actions is purchase ten benches with beautification grant funds, and there's already beautification grant funds. Our town staff is going to implement that action, because it's a very simple action. If it is bury the street light pole, which is one of the actions, then it's going to have to be a bigger discussion, where financing, the board is going to have to approve a bunch of things.
And that was my next question, vendors' grants, who makes the decision with procurement at that time, the action item or action plan?
Any procurement over ten thousand dollars. There will be public input.
Oh, I'm just trying to go for clarity for everyone.
Right.
And then fiscal responsibility falls on the.
Whichever board is doing it at the time, everything has to be budgeted, something isn't in the, we can't do anything right now, because it's not budgeted. Thank you.
Another question. We have the old school that's been abandoned by the county, it looks disgusting. We have the old gym building that's been abandoned by, it's abandoned by the county, it looks disgusting. The pond, we adopted to clean up, which is also park service, a lot of the property around here is county property. How are we going to make this vision plan work when we don't have, we're not in charge of the road seven twenty-five, it belongs to the state, we'd have to, we'd have to have buy-in from the state for doing things like that. The sidewalks are wonderful, I'm very happy to see that, it's a wonderful thing to be able to walk up the street and not have to buy a car. But how are we going to be directing county for this vision plan?
Great question, because when we went to the county to talk about the two point five million dollars, to talk about the school building, to talk about the stonehouse, they said, where's your plan? So this is what activates the county and the state and the federal government, to help us provide funding to make these things happen. Without a plan, it's just ideas. A plan that was community-driven, adopted by the council, that has an action plan with clear steps and clear funding mechanisms, very easy, shovel-ready. Hey, Senator Van Hollen, in your ear, Mark, this year, this is an important project to our economic development, are you willing to help us fund it? Okay, so that's, that's what the, the town has been missing, in order to get these things done. The county has been, we have been talking, they have been part of the conversations about how to make this go forward, and they are very happy to see that we are getting it done.
There was, there was a plan years ago, has some of that been adopted into this as well?
That was, I think, Joe's question, and yes. Answer to that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So basically, is the county to release funding while the decision plan?
Yeah, the county's not releasing planning with, money without.
This is why we started doing.
Right.
So basically, good then, based on that statement, your statement, have adaptive use statement as part of the vision plan. That I saw some stuff in here, I don't have a small chance to read it, and talk about like using front states or lower states for art, etc. Having an actual, this is our statement on adaptive reuse, that we can use when we go to the county and explain what we feel, because it's their property. They don't have the duty to take care of it either, this isn't even literally about making something happen with this, but making the county make something happen, if we can get grant funding, help the county do it for something longer than that. Because unless the county will give us something, and they won't without a plan, as their state or mayor, I'm sorry, mayor's grant on the state, then we have not. Lose the vision, or the county things are not taken care of.
And I do want to clarify that the county, when they decided that those properties weren't going to be maintained anymore, did offer them to the county. So it is back to becoming a collaborative strategy to make this vision happen. And I've spent a lot of time talking to them. See the vision, they get it, and they understand, not, we're not their focus area, we're going to do a lot of work ourselves, but we are working to make that happen. And as far as the structures themselves, that one of the action items, I will preview you, is that we would get designers in here to identify how the structures can look. Whether, whether they can be rehabbed, if they can't be rehabbed, what a replacement could look like that would fit with the consumer's vision. But they need the vision to guide them through that, so. No, we can't, sorry. It's okay, thank you, sorry. Anyone else? John, it looks like there's a hand online, I don't want to leave anyone.
No, there's no hand, we're good.
All right, so is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three fifteen vision? There's a second. Sir Coates, and would you call the rule?
Will do. President Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Culbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And we'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-three oh six, kind of Upper Marlboro logo. This is an introduction, and after conferring with the attorney, I made some changes to the one we had Friday. And I have some information from him, but I'm going to ask Sir Coates to read it into the record, and Administrator Snyder to give us an overview.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six, session, regular town meeting, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, authorizing and approving a new Chapter Three seal and logo of the town code. And ordinances establishing, defining, and describing the town seal and logos, designating the custodian of the town seal and logos, authorizing and prohibiting certain uses of the town seal or, or a logo, and prescribing that a violation of the chapter shall be misdemeanor and punishable by fine not to exceed five hundred, or imprisonment not to exceed ninety days or both, and generally relating to the approval and authorized use of the town seal and logos.
Thank you, Mayor, this ordinance was crafted by the town attorney to select the logo for the Town of Upper Marlboro, it's been discussed for the past couple of months. In addition to the town's logo, it also gives overview of the police and public works logos, which have been in use for the past couple of years, but have never been formally adopted. It also provides general guidelines of when, how, and how not to use the town logo and punishments for that, such as if someone printed T-shirt with the police seal or something like that. But that's just a quick overview of it, and I'll pass over to Mayor, if she's got any updates, as she's been working with Better City on the seal that's on the screen here.
Yeah, I did forget that, so just so everyone knows, we're on page twenty-eight of the packet. So I talked to Better City, and they just tallied the results right before, so that they had, as many people as wanted had a chance to vote. So the logo that was voted on, and one is D, which is in the bottom right corner. Well, wait, was it D or C, hang on, it's C, isn't it? I said D, and it's C, it's C, it's in the bottom left corner. I apologize, they just sent it over right before the meeting. So the one with the horse jumping, yeah. I voted for D, so maybe it was in my head, so, but, but C, C won.
C won.
There's a different, you see there's a different logo that's bigger? And the reason that is there is because a frequent comment was, it should say Town of, and then Upper Marlboro should be together on the bottom. However, the artist only did one like that, I wasn't going to put it out, and I wanted people to vote on the middle. And then we can say, we like this, put the Upper Marlboro together better, with logo C, with that change. So that's, that's the news about the logo. Do want to say that I asked the town attorney, I was like, fine of five hundred dollars or imprisonment, that seems intense, right? And so he said, that's just like a standard thing that people don't usually enforce, but I'm just, we should discuss whether we want to leave that in or not, I think. But we can talk about the logo as well. Awesome.
We good?
We're good? Right.
I like D.
I liked D too, and that's, it was in my head, but it was C, the people wanted C.
I'm not a big fan of the horse, the horse jumping out, it just doesn't seem right. My second choice would have to be B, even though it doesn't have my bird.
The people.
I think I picked D too, it's so funny.
Yeah.
I didn't pick it with your bird, but I might pick.
One other thing I want to bring up before we bring the public up here is on page. On page. Thirty-two, I believe, you know? I bet you packet, because I had to make some changes in the discussion with the town attorney.
The one that we have is thirty-two.
The one that we have is going to be thirty-two. Number two, use unwritten or printed materials for opposition of any state, federal legislation, or statewide referendum initiative or other ballot measure specifically authorized by the majority of the members of support. So this actually changes a charter rule, which is that, like, I can send a letter, so for example, Leslie was talking about the cannabis reform. The cannabis reform bill, they tried to pull the municipalities out of it. Now, I know we don't have a cannabis dispensary, and whether we want them or not, we haven't even had that discussion. But I knew that if we wound up with one, y'all wanted us to get the tax rate, right? So I was able to, the day they tried to pull it out, write a letter, send it to Leslie, get her the support she needed to get that bill changed. This part here takes away that ability to move with, of the mayor to say, hey, this is not in agreement with what my board wants. And I'm going to tell you that on the fly, because they do try to make changes at the last minute. I'm recommending we take that out, and that be part of a bigger discussion that the Charter Review Board is going to have about that role. Other than legislating that here.
Want to know two?
Yeah. I don't know if you guys have any other comments about it. Public has comments? Come on up.
D on page twenty-nine, bottom, adoption of the logo, if they just, or if this Marlboro logo retired and used adoption ordinance. Do you have thirty seconds to, Tony, this by the way is not the logo, it's the official town seal by proclamation in nineteen seventy-one, I have the documentation, if any commissioner wants to look at it. Because Dave Williams, the former clerk, had given it to me at one point as part of my field of storage. So, you know, the tobacco leaf is what I'm talking about, the three tobacco leaves, so if you have any info for me, I'd sure like it, and then I'd like to speak some more.
So it turned out, when the attorney wrote this, it turned out the seal is this thing he put on document. This is also, you know, you can see that public works and police are using the Duke of Marlboro coat of arms, but this is taking this tobacco leaf logo out of use and putting in the new community voted on.
Why, why, that's a question, why?
Okay, so we've kind of discussed this, which is that what I heard about the logo was that it is offensive and insulting, and that people do not feel like, they feel like they're being put in a place as, and being reminded of their past of being enslaved in this town with that logo. We had a community-wide vote and survey that was put out by Better City. It was a fifty, was like fifty-one percent voted to change the logo, and forty-nine percent voted to not change the logo. Given the reasons that people wanted to change the logo, we went through a process to change the logo. Because we understand that, you know, while, even though it was only a small minority, the reasons are hurtful. And in the seventies, we know that a lot of things happened as a backlash to the civil rights movement. And so I know that tobacco is the economic product from this town's history. We have to remember that two-thirds of the residents of this town today would have been in forced labor camps picking that tobacco. And I think as white people, we need to be sensitive to that fact and say, you know what, if the tobacco has a history, we can contextualize it, we really can't contextualize it in a seal. So we, this logo that everyone picks connects with the history, it has the Crane Monument, it has the horses, it has Schoolhouse Pond, it has the nature, it has the courthouse, and some buildings that are historic downtown. So we managed to keep history while not insulting most of our population. So that is why we went.
Thank you for your explanation, I'm high on it, twenty seconds left. I just want to mention tobacco leaves, Native Americans, you know, indentured servants, yes, enslaved people, non-enslaved people. Basically, everyone did it, it was used for commerce, and the reason the poor town of Marlboro exists, seventeen oh six, that's why the date. I want to point a correction, and you keep saying logo, I have a paper, I will provide to everyone in the commission in nineteen seventy, okay, thank you. Which officially prays as a town seal, okay? This is important not to reference in an official document, you have to say the former town seal or something of that nature, because you're basically saying, I don't believe it was a real proclamation, even though it was signed by three commissioners like yourselves, would you like that to happen to your work? You want to make sure that the process follows.
I'll ask Kevin about how he classified.
So in one hundred and fifty-seven municipalities on the Maryland manual.
I, I'll let you go over a little bit to get that point.
At the end of the.
I just wanna say one thing. You know, I, I like the new logo, but I also wanna just make it clear that every race has been enslaved in some form or fashion. And, you know, black people, you know, we pull out, we pulled ourselves up and we're not beaten and downtrodden. So I, you know, don't wanna have that type of stigma on us. And we are a big part of the town, so, I mean, I don't see the issue with changing the logo, but I don't see the issue with keeping the logo either, either way, because it's can't erase history.
Is there any other public comments?
Y'all are playing over high. Um, I believe what Brian was gonna say is that Upper Marlboro's reason for existing is because of tobacco. Um, we were specifically designated, uh, by crown in Britain, um, as one of the tobacco ports. And the, you know, it was three landholders. They took property from, they designated this as one of the towns that tobacco could be weighed to be shipped over to England. And so, yes, there were some racial issues. Uh, I don't know how many people were indentured servants versus full slaves in this area, um, that specifically worked tobacco. But if it wasn't for tobacco, this town would not exist.
Hey, this is Alma from Old Crane Highway. A lot of states have tobacco, Virginia, Carolina. My issue with the logo is not really holding on to the history, because the history doesn't go away. And the people that care know the history and will read up on it. My issue with the logo currently is the fact that it does have a tobacco leaf and it's true that tobacco is dangerous for us. So it seems to me like we're a little bit promoting it by having it on all the little flags and like, I voted to have it off. I prefer to have it off. As somebody that occasionally smokes a cigarette, I don't think that we should promote it. I think it should be something more really about the town and what makes this town, um, what it is today, which is probably the forces, even though I'm not a code of forces. But I just don't like holding on to that path of everybody smoking tobacco and accepting tobacco and just kind of making it part of your life, when we now all know it's not healthy.
President Franklin, I have everyone online.
Are you able to let her speak?
Yeah, I'm trying to get her in. Hang on. Go ahead, Evelyn.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Okay. Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, I, um, have heard the comments from everyone and all are very good comments, even the one that speaks of tobacco being really not healthy for us. And I, and I can understand that. However, I do believe that the tobacco leaf, again, is a sign of our history. And I do believe that we should have some part of our history to carry on into perpetuity. And I also wanna say that we do have a, um, a picture of oppression of blacks in this new logo that we have. The courthouse is a perfect example of how blacks were unfairly incarcerated for so many years and still are unfairly incarcerated. So I say, I feel that it's very ironic that we're trying to get rid of that tobacco, which was the means for many people, blacks, whites, uh, Native Americans, that was their means of survival back there in the day. But yet we do keep a picture of oppression today, where we have in this town now the majority of African-Americans are in this town. That's all I wanna say. I just wanna make that point. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to approve ordinance, or sorry, it's an introduction. We don't need to make. We don't need to vote on, we only have one more thing to vote. So, carry on. Okay. Item E, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh seven codification for Cozen. I'm gonna ask you to read this and also take it through, because this is your project.
Will do. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero seven session, regular town meeting introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, an ordinance adopting a codification and revision of the ordinances of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Prince George's County, State of Maryland, providing for the maintenance and said code, repealing and saving from repeal certain ordinances not included therein and other provisions of general and specific subject matter found therein and making certain changes in previously adopted ordinances. So what this is, is this is approving the codification proofs that have been given to all the commissioners. Uh, that the, this will now be a online searchable code that will be placed on the town's website so that residents can go through and search the code to find out what has been approved by the Board of Commissioners as basically town law. So that is what's before you.
And, um, Clarkothen, can you, um, fill us in on, there were some issues with like the resolutions and ordinances and the fees and stuff? Can you fill us in on this?
We are currently working with MUNICO to address those issues. We are taking some of the resolutions and providing it to them uh, to clear up some of the, to provide clarification on some of it. So that is a work in progress and I've been working with, um, the team over at MUNICO to get that done. So it's possible in the coming days, we should have some additional proofs coming your way.
So basically, we hope to have that done by August, when we'd actually vote on it.
That's correct.
Commissioners have any other questions? Public, if you have comments on this, it's like a hundred or several hundred pages. So I'm sure everyone's read it. There may be four pages. Right, um, so we will move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh eight, year-end budget amendment. I'm gonna ask Clarkothen to read that into the record and then Administrator Snyder to take us through that.
All right. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero eight, session, regular town meeting introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. This is an emergency ordinance, an ordinance relating to adopting and approving budget amendments for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget.
Thank you, John. Um, just wanna go through this real quick, um, what some of the changes were, um, as we discussed previously. Uh, just doing a budget amendment at the end of the year. We weren't sure if we were going to have to, but as we saw that, um, the kind of end of year expenditures and incomes come in, it was decided that we would have to pull the trigger on a budget amendment. Um, so there's the one before the board. It's an emergency, just to get it passed and acted in time as we're going through the audit process, which has already begun. Uh, I can give a quick, uh, overview of what's changed. On the revenue side, we saw a much larger increase in parking meter revenues, about seventy thousand, where the parking meter revenues came in. Additionally, so with that, we saw higher merchant fees on the expenditure side, which I'll get to. But so about seventy thousand in parking meter revenues and, uh, about seven thousand in additional parking fines that was initially budgeted um, in FY twenty-three. So that was the, uh, increases on the revenue side, on the expenditure side. Uh, we saw some hits on the general government. Um, as I mentioned, there was additional merchant fees. We also had, uh, had to plan for an unplanned election, about eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, we spent about, um, just under sixteen thousand, uh, trying to get all the commissioners to M L and visit trainings that have been going on over the past couple of months. Uh, we had the rebuilding of the town hall HVAC unit, about twenty-one thousand five hundred. Uh, the merchant fees, uh, twenty thousand additional got put into that line item. They cover the merchant fees, because as all the credit card transactions we were seeing, uh, twenty-five thousand was shifted um, to the HR line and we're using them as our circuit rider for the circuit rider grant. So that was grant funded twenty-five thousand. That was pulled out of, uh, salaries and moved over to the circuit rider grant. Um, dues and subscriptions and I T went over, uh, by fourteen thousand and twenty-seven. Effectively, and some of those items in the equipment and I T, uh, were some I T infrastructure and ARPA increases both between police and general government. And also, when we get to public works, uh, they saw twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar increase. Uh, we had to pay the deposit on the new truck for twenty thousand. That was supposed to be paid out in FY twenty-one. That was never done because the truck wasn't built in time. So we paid that this fiscal year instead, and then we saw an additional seventy-five hundred uh, for fleet and fuel maintenance costs. A lot of that is passed to uh, invoices from the county, so they did not send them in FY twenty-one. They sent them in FY, or FY twenty-two. They sent them in FY twenty-three. Uh, so we had to pay those after, um, haggling with them. So that's just a quick overview of, of the changes being made, um, overall, the town did come out ahead.
Yeah, we came out in the black at the end. By how much? I can't remember.
I wa, I wanna say. Yeah, just about that. And just thank you to the mayor and Crystal and the, uh, accounting team for putting this together while I was on vacation last week. It got a bit more complicated than anticipated.
Well, being Kyle is not an easy job, so. Uh, do we have any questions on the board? Public comment?
I just have a couple of things and I'm not sure what I'm looking at, the difference between this one and the one that has the revenue percent bank account. Which one are we talking about?
Okay, the one on page forty, or thirty-nine through forty-one. And the, the variances you're seeing have to do with month thirteen, which we're in, um, and receipts still coming in this month. So that's where we were at, right? But receipts are still coming in this month that apply to last month and things are still being shifted and split.
Sorry, so I saw something that looked like this. How is this affected by this? The one that has the bank account at the bottom versus the.
Right, so you're talking about the treasurer's report, which is.
Yes.
Right, that is a snapshot of the account where they were at. But they're still, while we're in month thirteenth, July, we still are getting bills that are from June. So it won't be till it's next month, Kyle, that this, the, the report will actually reflect the final budget tally, or is it September that we get it?
Um, so it's kind of mixed in with the audit. We've done different things throughout the year. We could try to do an end for in August to, um, both an end of year of FY twenty-three. finalize the budget amendment, where everything lined up as well as a, uh, first year of FY twenty-four in July. So we could do two reports if the board wanted. Um, and then obviously you have the audit, uh, toward the end of the year. We can turn that in September, October timeframe. So that's when a lot of the information comes public as well, as we're wrapping through the, uh, the June invoices coming in in July.
It's just still getting cleaned out.
So, uh, I looked at the May. Does this have anything to do with the May budget? Cause I looked at the May and I looked at the actual budget and I noticed that in May, we had eighty-seven, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in intergovernmental. And now the actual is at fifty-six, two fifteen. How did you actually lose revenue on that line item?
It just got moved from, I wanna say he, he moved around. I think he moved, did different things with the fees and the parking, but I don't remember, Kyle, my conversation with him last week.
When, when this is all done, can we get a line item budget of the changes that came? Because right now, this is very confusing to me that we saw revenue decrease.
So we, we didn't see revenue decrease. We just shifted where that revenue was accounted for, because it, I think the intergovernmental revenue was actually capturing some of the speed camera, which should have been in fine. Uh, but yes, we, we can provide a final year-end report once month thirteen is over and everything is split where it needs to be, which takes, you know.
Okay, that's, I, I wasn't, wasn't adding up. I mean, I wasn't gonna not say something.
I mean, that's why I was pulling my hair out this week.
Y'all are playing over high. On page forty, um, the table that's at the bottom. Uh, two columns, both say amended FY twenty-three budget amount. But I assume that one of those is not amended FY twenty-three budget amount?
These are both amended, right, Kyle? Because they're one is from the previous amendment, or should it say the first column say adopted?
It should, we may have to, cause I apologize, I didn't, I didn't write this piece. Um, they should probably reflect, uh, FY twenty-three budget ordinance. Um, that may be the right numbers, because we passed the budget in the year ahead. So I just have to look back and see, those could be the correct, because the, the town attorney went through, that's correct, you know? So those could be.
That's the adopted, not the amended.
That's the initial adopted budget done in June or May of, of, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Did you have more? Any other public comments?
I have none online.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt emergency ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh eight, year-end budget amendment? That was Commissioner Lot. Is there a second? Clarkothen, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
I.
Commissioner Colbert.
I.
Commissioner Hanchett. Commissioner Lot.
I.
Commissioner Penoyer.
I.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh nine, land purchase fifty-five ten Old Crane Highway. I'm gonna ask Clarkothen to read that into the record and Town Administrator Snyder to give us an overview.
All right, emergency ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero nine, session, regular town meeting introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three enacted July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. An emergency ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, authorizing the purchase of fifty-five ten Old Crane Highway, also known as partial one ninety-seven, tax account number zero-three dash zero-two-three-five-one-eight-four, approximately twenty-six point zero-three acres in area, located near the town of Upper Marlboro and the execution of a contingency land sales contract conveying said real property to the town and generally relating to the acquisition of real property for a public purpose.
Thank you, John. Uh, so we've been discussing this for the, uh, past couple of months. Um, so this is emergency ordinance. It's similar to the ordinance that was passed for the pocket park purchase. Uh, it's urgency, just so that uh, we can kind of speed up the timeframe a little bit, uh, with the land acquisition process that we're going through. This is a fully refundable purchase through the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Open Space Grant. So it's not only for the purchase, but it's also for all the acquisition costs that the town's incurring as well. So we need to get two appraisals. We have to get a survey done, um, some attorney fees and whatnot. So that's all gonna be finalized at the end. Uh, but parking planning, uh, just as of, uh, yesterday finalized that the, uh, if they're gonna release this portion of their funds, because they manage the, uh, program open space funds for insurance, then they're releasing the needed funds over, uh, to the town. Um, so that's, we're, we're solid. The, the money's coming in for this program. Um, the next, as the D and R process is our application, we're gonna go, it's gonna go before the Board of Public Works for approval and then we can get the, the reimbursement. We're trying to time it so that the town cuts the check for the purchase and we get reimbursed pretty quickly. Um, so just looking at cash flow, which we won't have an issue with where we are right now with our, our cash flow balances. We hope to, we keep that money pretty quickly, but that's something I'm keeping my eye on. And then, uh, of course, the P A F C, uh, trail study and feasibility study is coming, uh, right behind. That's, um, hopefully. Uh, but I can answer any questions, uh, from the board or.
President's comment?
Will be annexed?
It, it is annexed.
Oh, it is where the annex.
There is, there are court proceedings, but it is annexed.
Okay. Well, may we show it on a map so people know we're, what we're talking about?
I don't know that we have a map right now, but it is across the street. And you don't know it's there, but it's twenty-seven acres that has historic elements on it. And it is where the Chesapeake Rail Trail went.
Let me know the John real quick with the map. That would be helpful.
If you turn, like, go to, if you, if you were at the, if you're at the playground and you walk across the street, it's there. Once you go over that. It's there. Once you go over that little, it used to be the railroad treffer, right? You're in this twenty seven acres. It's a lot like, don't anticipate hiking in it this year, it needs a lot of cleanup, it has a lot, like it has Volkswagen bug in there, guys, like. So it's 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 going to.
Road access is the old railroad track, so there's a strip that goes from the road in and then it opens up. So that strip was the railroad track.
But you don't drive, don't drive in there.
No, I'm just saying, it's hard to connect to the street.
Jared, I will move over by two questions. Does it connect to Valley Lane? And also, as you mentioned, open space, would this then be required to remain open space? Because in the, whenever that other action plan was done, that was actually one of the proposals of annex that. And you could put some houses in there and add your numbers.
We're not doing that.
Right, so this does maintain it as open space. And.
For recreation.
It is at the end of Valley Lane and there is no current road access to it.
So would, if it if it was open space, can we still build a road to connect to Valley Lane? So that way, when it floods, because my understanding is that that is the way that residents is get in and out during time water. Is along the railroad right away.
Not on Valley Lane, because it'd have to go through. Yeah, I don't think they do.
Would you, it, well, I don't, I don't know if it's living back there right now, but you would always see cars parked there. Right where the railroad right away was because they would hike out to their cars.
Well. Yeah, it it, open space can be parked, it can be, it can include some public work facilities, it could be nature centers. But really, there's a trail that is kind of critical to the tourism. Part of what this town can be and how we can bring in money to help support. I have the downtown we want, and this trail ties into that. And so, and there will be a lot of really great historic resources we will uncover, it will make the development process challenging. But I think it's worth it for what we'll find back there.
Herr Cozen's putting a map on the screen and there's some pictures as well. But yeah, the preservation does go on the deed, it's a requirement from DNR. With the, just the outline. Now, these are just shots off Redfin, we had to put these together to send to the state. They can see the railroad access. There, and Joe is probably going to hit some old houses and cars here toward the end. That's the avenue for Old Crane.
We will have to take some steps to make it safe, so there will, it will be closed off after the purchase. While we make the property safe to go on.
And we are looking at, we're in preliminary discussions with the N R to use open space funds to mitigate. One thing we discussed with him was the way we kind of crafted the application to. Highlight the properties and the mitigations that had to happen, kind of claim them ahead of time so that we can bait them. With open space funds afterwards, after the acquisition, so we're already working on funding to make it safe. And we talked to legit as well.
Alright, any other public comment? We've been, then, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty three amendment? So is there a second? Herr Cozen, would you call the role?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Move on, thank you everyone, to our F I P and B I P approvals. I'm going to turn that over to Town Administrator Snyder and Commissioner Colbert to tag team. And, oh, we are on page, is this on one of the pages?
Not on one of the pages. Do you want me to take the mission?
Sure, I'll I'll preface it. So at the last work session, I requested that for the outstanding F I P C I P applications that were still pending approval. Or pending review by the New Economic Development Work Group, I requested that those be included for approval. And payment in this meeting so that we can get these businesses, the funds that they're looking for, for their improvements. As we continue to, or as we set the first meeting for the Economic Development Work Group, which hopefully will have in August. And and move forward from there. Kyle, I'll let you talk to the specifics of each of the applications. But my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve these four so that we can make sure the funding is allocated before it expires.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. So these are the four properties that we have applications in for, some are more complete than others, so the board makes the motion. I just asked that the board approves that once all documents are, we can get it through. There's a couple I've reached out to before I left for vacation, hey, looks like we're missing X, Y, Z, can you get it over to us? I know the Herbert Building hadn't painted yet, so they painted, they just got the receipts back, so. Just little things like that, but I'm working with the D H C D to process these, put them through, and issue up the payments. So once the board approves it, we'll we'll just, I'll be able to move quickly on it, we don't have to wait for the August town meeting.
How much are we giving each project?
I can email that out, they were kind of different throughout, but we, it's a fifty percent contributing match. So I can tell you, like, Herbert Building. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't able to throw all the figures and whatnot and make it fancy, but I can email. Once we get it finalized, I can put an email out to the board and we can present it at a town meeting or something of what what actually got spent in those categories. To to be clear, this is this is also.
So the fifty percent match on the precedent permits that it's funded by the state.
Right.
Any other questions? Public comment? Is there a motion to approve? All applications. Afrique Fashion House, Beijan Divas, Lido Pizza, Herbert Building, annex. With the condition and that they are approved once all relevant documents are provided to the town administrator. Is there a second? Herr Cozen, would you call the role?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Penoyer.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to public comment. This is three minutes for any items that you wish to speak about, whether it is on the agenda or not.
Wanted to point out, I didn't finish, but this is considered the town seal. I don't know if it was ever officially made the town seal, but I guess it's gotten to do that. Please, I will give a website to you, the State Online website. It's where state has one hundred fifty seven municipalities. This, if it went on the letterhead, to someone at the state level or above would be a trap to the embarrassment. Is the worst of the one hundred fifty seven. It looks like a notary stamp. Which probably was purchased for because it says town commissioners, which would be something you buy as a notary, you go to the trunk and it puts the ball steel on. Please, please, maybe strip this piece out and do it later and make the final about the logo or delay this until you can get something better than this. Because man alive, I hate to see this, this represent the town to the state delegates and the people all these letterheads are going through it, it's horrible.
I will confer with the town attorney on it.
Mine's free ranch drive. I remember saying about the backpack, I don't know if you heard. When they got their new. Of education, he clarified from high school, you know, the clear backpack.
I did hear that on a news.
And the odor may not always come from the landfill, but down at the train track.
I should have clarified that the landfill does not believe the timing of the odor is, they they think it's not coming from the landfill. And I'm willing to consider it because they noted other sources that may be coming. So we're doing data collection to identify the source.
Jared, play a little over by, a few things to fill out what Evelyn said about the courthouse expansion, or the courthouse in general. That is also the location of where one of the first black high schools in. The country was, and they pulled over the building. Also, early you said people with medical equipment should contact the town, they should also contact Tepco. Because the more people that have need for electricity helps to prioritize our town is getting powered up. The libraries have been having H V A C issues, they are hoping to get that fixed soon, but they're closed right now, it's probably not good enough for me.
But their programs are here, right now.
They still are having programs?
So the programs are being held here in this room.
Okay.
And for the.
On the vision plans you just approved, there is a section on facilitating connections, facilitating opportunities for community members to connect is essential for creating a strong and cohesive community. When community members connect with each other, they develop relationships and a sense of belonging, which can help promote social cohesion, the shared sense of purpose. I think we agreed, and many years ago, I tried to get like a regular reoccurring board game night. And I know the event committee did put ours on, but it was just like a one time big event. And you all just approved that, is there any possibility that we can get space, like maybe meeting once a month to just hang out and stay board games together?
Well, we do have something in place that Tyler and I are working on. Are doing a community event once a month. So in 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 fall months and the winter months, it will consist of court games being go for the seniors, different things that we plan to do.
Not even, not even just for seniors, just the.
Well, it's, yeah, well, I mean.
Looking through it, it's a library and just, they want to charge us for using the space there. We can do it in the basement, but then it's.
Well, we are doing something, so we we can, we can work together, but we are doing something here.
And if if a group of residents comes to us and wants to have their their own, you know, if there's a group of residents, it's the board game residents, and they come and request. Then we will work with you on that, it was just not having, you and I talked about that, and it was just not having. Alright, we can discuss that once we close the meeting. Alright, let's finish the public comment, okay? We get, we gotta make sure that anyone.
August twelfth was the date, and you said backpack, do you have a list of what you need?
Um, no. St. John's, I can, you know what, because I was talking to the. Through the schools we be to, I'll just ask them to send me a list and we'll put it on the.
And just like you have moved up to similar things, so you may wanna.
Okay, but but as Yvonne says, I saw on the news that PG County now has to have clear backpacks. So that's something that I would like to, I had to tell for John about, maybe we have to put that on the thing. Because the other book bags are not going to sell now.
So the other thing, so there's several places that do it, I know that Providence St. John is also doing, they're posting a group. That like does these backpack and haircutting drives. So maybe we can collect all that too. So I'll get a list from the. Alright, so next meeting agenda, oh wait, administrative updates? Forgot we had administrative updates. Chief, you wanted to ask us about a grant. The townwide security, is that correct?
Right, so, good evening, everybody. So as you see, it says townwide security. I was trying to see how the board felt about two types of camera systems. Regular video surveillance cameras in the downtown area, sort of like main and water across from the seven eleven. Maybe down by the liquor store. Those are three initial areas that I would like to put surveillance cameras in the roadway. So it would be more or less watching cars, things of that nature, not facing any buildings or anything, it's mainly on the road. But also at the interests and exits, is what I'm going to call them, Old Crane, seven twenty five, Water Street. And seven twenty five on this side are four entrances and exits to put possibly license plate readers. You have them on the cars, but obviously we don't work twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. But the reason for the license plate readers and the camera is, two weeks ago, Prince George County Police came to us and said, hey. We had some robberies in the area, did your cameras capture these cars fleeing the scene? Well, if you don't go above the speed limit, the camera's not going to take the picture. So we checked, we were able to contact the vendor and say, look, this is a description of the car. You all capture anything? And they basically said no. So we're not a hundred percent sure if they came through the town or if they turned before they got to the town. But having a license plate reader, if they tell us the make and model, we can research just based on the timeframe and pull that data. So it's not anything different than the speed cameras that we have, but we're able to do it more real time. And as you all know, crime is on the rise and things are happening in and around the town, not so much in the town. But I would like to remind everybody, I got this confirmed today, one point five million people go to the courthouse every day. In February, they had, they streamed fifty thousand visitors in one month. That's a lot of people in and out of the town, so. I think it would be proactive for us to at least be able to know if individuals who are doing things. In town or even around town, we can have the the ability to identify them a lot more quickly. Currently, right now, we don't have anything to do that. Just trying to see what the board thought. There is a grant out there that's due Monday. But we're not going to be able to qualify for it because there's a lot more red tape that we we can't get through in that timeframe to do it. But if other grants come up, I would like to know if the board is willing, if we could already have it approved so that that'll be a part of our process to say that the board has already approved it. And it would be paid for out of grant money. So it would be no town money or very little town money if that's spent.
I agree. Question me. Anyone else's opinion? I know that downtown businesses would appreciate something downtown, so I will say yes to that.
Go ahead.
Get in.
We 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 did also eliminate license plates, I remember when when we first got the sheet cameras, the other option was getting infrared cameras. And we went with the ones that flash, these are going to be flash.
These are, they're, they're infrared because they actually, it's a different technology. This particular vendor uses flash on these cameras, so. So there's no camera flash.
I definitely see lots of flashing.
So just right now, we don't have a majority opinion from the board, so we just have two of us, so Commissioner Hanchett, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Penoyer, maybe alphabetical order. Commissioner Colbert, do you want to? Your thoughts? We lost them. Okay, Commissioner Hanchett.
I want to do a little more research on it, see. Learn more about it. It just seems intrusive, I I, I want to see what like, what does the A C L U think of it and. Just research it a little more. See what other towns are doing.
I don't think it's a problem since, especially since it's coming out of grant money and if it's going to help us keep towns safe, then.
I think we just talked to you, but grant money is talking more about privacy of individual.
No, I I understand, I understand, but he said that it wasn't going to be on any individual, it was going to be used for.
So if you don't know now, most intersections already have traffic cameras on them, that's what you see the little hole, so they're already there.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it'd be very similar to that, but there are not many at the intersection of Main and Water and then across from the seven eleven, say, Seventh and Water and Church Street. So what what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not actually surveilling people, what we're trying to do is make sure that if any, any individual commits a crime. Or comes through the town, we can identify. Or comes through the town, we can identify them here and assist with our own crime issues. And assist the others surrounding agency, which is Prince George County Police, Park Police, and insurance office. Because if something happens at the courthouse, those individuals walk off the curb, it becomes our responsibility, and like I said, fifty thousand people, twenty, thirty thousand people a month are coming and going. And they're not all there for ice cream and cupcakes, it's the courthouse, so they're there because there's some type of criminal activity. Going on and a lot of these individuals are driving stolen cars in the town. They're parking them over at the question center or in the building over there, but obviously if we knew that, we could be a lot more proactive and.
Please go back and research what happened.
Yeah, or it can be real time as well, because if we have an alert, if we know that a suspect vehicle is in the system. When it hits that camera, it's gonna flag and alert not only us, but all the other surrounding jurisdictions that this car just came into the town of Marlboro. And we'll know when it came in and when it left. So if we don't, if we go to sheriff or the county doesn't get it before these towns. We'll know when it came into town and when it left, we will have the the L P Rs at the entrance that's going in and coming out.
I just want, I'm I wanna ask Commissioner Colbert, but I want a point of clarity, um Freeman had a break in overnight. But would this downtown stuff have helped, I mean, we solved it very quickly anyway, but would this have helped?
It it would have helped, yes, but we did have an eyewitness. Who gave us a vague description, but had you had cameras, then we would have gotten a better description of the individual, because it would have shown. The image of the person, so if you're not.
I mean, we still solved it in like several, a few hours, but regardless, Commissioner Colbert, go ahead.
That's the barber shop right there at Main and Water.
Do you know, Commissioner Colbert, what do you think? Can you hear?
I think it's screen froze.
Thinking. Commissioner Colbert, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
You mute.
Oh, you're muted.
Unmute.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Um no, I I I'm. Pretty much in a in agreement, I mean, I think as long as it's not a constant surveillance type of situation, if we can help other, you know. Uh law enforcement entities with issues that are going on, I I think we should be in support of that.
So it sounds like it it there's at least three people who say, yes, if you see a grant. Go forth, obviously communicate with us when it comes through. All right, farmer's market, do you have something about farmer's market or with cattle?
It's still in the planning phases, uh. Decisions are still being made, but we were gonna put uh Facebook and. Compton contact information out as soon as it becomes available.
Um and then um on the skids here, I think I'm gonna ask Administrator Snyder to explain. Kind of give us a preview, because that's gonna come up um at the next meeting, because it's financing, that's why I'm asking you to do it, sorry.
The for the skids to your mayor?
Right, so like, because we're gonna adjust the next meeting to be a special meeting so we can vote, but it's a financing thing. I don't know.
Okay, absolutely, um so as we've done purchases in the past, the purchases are approved. By the budget ordinance, but we don't exactly spell out what we're purchasing, have to be approved by a resolution of the board at a later time, uh so the Director of Public Works found the skid steer. Um was one of the items that the board funded that's uh for F Y twenty four, so just bring a resolution before the board to purchase and um these uh said skid steer. At the August work session, so we'll be working that information together and put forward.
And so just. Cause we're probably gonna be voting on this, which is it's approved by the budget, it's a voting matter, recommending that we turn the work session into. Sort of a special meeting, like a special meeting so that we can vote, so, but let's look at the um. Next meeting agenda. We just, oh, we wanna. So that the next meeting agenda for the work session. Has um discussion of the seal and logo, discussion of certification, um the skid steer would be a vote. Um the Spring Branch R F P, I would I would really like that to be a vote because. It would allow us to put it out sooner and get Spring Branch paid sooner, and I am hearing from the residents of Spring Branch that they want it paid sooner. Um. Church Street Parking Lot, um that could be a a vote either for putting, we just said vote, you know, it's like, this is the R F P, we all agree, this is the R F P we want, we vote, put it out. Um then phase three annexation, I think that some of the agreements will be in, and so that's on there for us to look at and approve. So if they don't come in, we'll take it off, but I'm pretty sure they're coming. Is there anything else we should add, take away, are we concerned about? Voting, um I just, I really wanna get Spring Branch paid sooner rather than later, so that's why I'm hoping we can change it to a special. Meeting and a lot of voting.
I have one thing from the green team, they were um talking about uh deciding on the permit for the farmer's market.
Okay, farmer's market.
I think we're gonna have a proposal by then.
Okay, so uh Commissioner Hanchett wants to add um a request from the.
Permit fees.
About permit fees.
Yep.
For the farmer's market.
Yep. So we'll get that before.
Did you get that, Clark Olson?
So.
I did.
Make sure, John. Anything else right now, uh stuff just comes up? All right, is everyone okay with voting on those things at that time? There. Then a motion to adjourn? Is there a second, and do you wanna call the roll, Clark Olson?
Will do, President Franklin.
I.
Commissioner Colbert.
I.
Commissioner Hanchett. Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Penoyer.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda is saying community garden vegetable on your way out, thank you.